Okay, at 6:32, I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, May 29, 2012, to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of May 14, 2012. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, and in discussion. Seeing none of us in favor.
Aye.
In unanimous. Item number three on the agenda is confirmation of future meeting dates. I have meeting dates of June 7 at 6:30 p.m., June 13 at 8 p.m., and that would be a joint, on a joint meeting with the school committee on June 21.
Mr. Chairman, that's not confirmed yet, so I have to come back to that one.
Okay.
But that's tentative?
Okay, and then we have a tentative executive--
Regular meeting, you have a regular meeting on the 21st, and then on June 6th, we would have tentatively a meeting of the Governor's Trustees.
Right.
And that would be executive session.
Mm-hmm.
That would be 6:30.
6:30.
And the 13th, my understanding is that Mr. Sweeney would be able to meet earlier on the 13th, so that time may, if it is the 13th, the time may be earlier, depending on the school committee.
Okay.
I believe the school committee meets at 7:30?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, so maybe seven o'clock. So I'll get, I'll confirm the 13th, and I'll confirm the time.
Okay, early's always better.
And then our next, well, our next meeting would be Governor's Trustees on the 6th?
Yes, that's correct.
And then is it a regular meeting on the 7th?
Regular meeting on the Board of Selectmen.
At 6:30. And then the next regular meeting after that would be June 21 at 8 p.m.
Are you okay with that?
It's good.
Okay, item number four, my very first televised citizen speak. So for any citizens out there that would wish to speak. Peter, how you doing?
Good. Peter Mullen, Gaskins Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I come this evening to raise some public safety concerns with regard to the former Henry's Ice Cream Plant at 131 Elliott Street. These concerns, I think, have been heightened recently by a letter from former fire chief Malcolm Larson to the My Town Matters website. I don't know whether the members of the board have seen the letter. I've got some copies of the letter, and I thought I'd hand some out. In his letter, Chief Larson describes the Henry's Plant as being, quote, "not very different than the Worcester Cold Storage Building where the six Worcester firefighters were killed during a fire back in 1999." He describes the Henry's Building as being a windowless, cork-insulated, old cold storage warehouse. He says the ceilings and walls are caving in, the roof and floors are sagging and unsafe to walk on. He says the roof lets in more water than it keeps out. And he says that there's four feet of stagnant water in the basement of the building. He notes that 10 years ago, he had the building marked with a red X, which indicates that there would be no entry in the event of a fire by the fire department. In his letter, he says that Milton Police Department reports document people being in and on the building, and he says that he's seen evidence himself of people, of the building being occupied. And the chief, the former chief warns that, you know, if there are people in the building, that totally changes everything from a firefighter's perspective should there be a fire at that location. And I would note that recently, I mean, within the last month, there's been fairly extensive graffiti on that building, so there are some people around there at least. They put some graffiti on the building. We don't know what else they might be doing. Chief Larson recommended that there be a structural engineering report with regard to the building. I understand that the building's owner, Mr. Conley, has recently provided a report to the town administrator by an engineer relating to the building. I would ask that that, that the board direct that that report be made available to the public and that it be posted on the town's website so that everybody can see what the report contains and what information has been provided. I've been told that this week, some town officials did an inspection at the building, and that a report is being prepared, that among the people inspecting was an engineer who had been retained by the town, and that a report is being prepared with regard to that inspection. I would ask that that report, once it's prepared, that that also be made available to the public and that it be posted on the town's website so that everybody can be familiar with whatever has been found in connection with that inspection. I realize that the circumstances at that building are complicated. Most of the building is, at least my understanding, is privately owned by a realty trust that Mr. Conley controls, and that he has an application pending with the planning board for a special permit to redevelop the site. My understanding is that the town still owns a portion of both the land underneath where that MBTA parking lot used to be and the building above that, and that the town is under a purchase and sale agreement to sell that portion to Mr. Conley once he has a building permit. One of my purposes or reasons in coming tonight is to suggest that the public safety concerns with regard to that building really need to be kept separate and distinct from the zoning, the planning board, the redevelopment concerns with regard to that building. Public safety is a concern of the Board of Selectmen. I would urge the board to gather as much information as it can with regard to the public safety concerns there, to make that information available to the public generally, and then the board will be able to get some public input with regard to what should be done with regard to the building.
Okay. Do you have more, Peter?
No.
Okay. I know Dennis has something he'd like to say, and just quickly, everything you said is factual and true. So, you know, we all recognize, A, it is unsightly, we all wish it were down, just from that standpoint, and the Board of Selectmen are aware of the public safety concern. That's, in part, when we became aware of it, that's when we decided to hire the structural engineer to get a confirmatory report that either is structurally sound or it isn't. And we have not gotten that report yet, but as far as I know, there's nothing that would not allow that to be a public document. It's not anything that's going to be litigation, as far as I know, or, so I believe it can be a public document.
Yeah, just ask the board, just let me check one thing on that.
Okay.
It may be an item that you want to consider before releasing it, but I can report back to the board.
But assuming Town Council has no problem with it being a public document, the Board of Selectmen have no problem with it being a public document. So we will make that public. And like I said, we are very concerned about the public safety factor of it, specifically, you know, walls falling down, it's right next to the railroad tracks, you know, I mean, it could be a disaster if a wall came down, so, yeah.
I think the public would also be interested in both engineering reports.
True. And again, assuming the Town Council has no problem with that, the Selectmen have no problem with that.
And, Mr. Mullen, I appreciate you being here tonight, because, as I was telling Mr. Murn, I actually had a building collapse on me a number of years ago, and it was in disrepair for a couple of years. We did have an engineer's report from the city, and I did have my own engineer's report, and in the meantime, it did collapse. And the roof collapsed and pushed the wall out onto the street, and it's across from UMass Dartmouth, so, but luckily for me, it was 10:05 in the morning when no kids were there. So I understand your concern for this building. It's something that I'm, I've expressed to Mr. Murn right at the beginning after I got elected, that this is, this is number one on my list, to make sure that the public are secure down there, especially near the train tracks, right behind it, only because I've been through it. So, as Mr. Hurley said, we, Steve Conley did get an engineer's report, and the town has an engineer's report, we just don't have it in our hands yet. And as soon as we determine our report, if it's in imminent danger of collapsing, well then we'll take, we'll take further action immediately.
Unfortunately, the cost of taking it down, I mean, there would be a significant cost if it does have to come down, which may have to be borne by the town if Mr. Conley chooses not to cooperate and, you know, pay for part of that structure. If it's a public safety issue, then it'll come down. We'll have to figure out where we're going to get money from that hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Ellen Denoyer. I'm, I live on Capen Street. I have a particular interest in the building because I'm a trolley rider, and I sometimes walk to Central Avenue so I can, you know, use the local businesses, get a cup of coffee, and get on the trolley, so I use that stop from time to time. I'm also an architect, and so, and a member of the Columbine Cliff Neighborhood Association Board, and as an association, we're very concerned, obviously, about the condition of the building, so we appreciate that you share those concerns. As an architect, I have done a little bit of research about what I'd like to suggest as some of the additional steps that the selectmen could take in anticipation of, obviously, at some point, sooner or later, the building is going to come down, or we believe it's going to come down. I guess there's, in theory, a possibility it could be renovated, but in any case, there are a series of steps and additional information that I think the selectmen should pursue in addition to a structural engineer's report. I think there should be more information about the existing conditions, which may or may not be in the engineer's report. For instance, what is the condition of the lighting, the building egress, is there a working fire alarm or sprinkler system, so those other kinds of issues. And I think in particular, there's a concern that there are likely to be hazardous materials in the building, and so there would, you know, potentially asbestos, lead paint, mold, PCBs in the light fixtures, there are a whole series of things, given the age of the building. So I think several steps that should be taken, actually, the very first step would be to make the building safe to work in, because my understanding is it would not be safe at the moment, even for someone to go in and survey hazardous materials. So there's a whole sort of make-safe effort that I think should be looked at and priced, and, you know, what's the scope of that work and what needs to be done. But then I think a professional hazardous materials survey needs to be done that would involve some sampling, some testing as a first step, and then as a next step, quantifying and getting a cost estimate for remediation of the materials. So all of that is going to need to be done sooner or later by Mr. Conley, by the town, in some combination. So I would like to encourage that those steps be started as a process, just to gather the information. And then getting an estimate for demolition. Obviously, you need to know about the hazardous materials and the interior condition of the building, but I think all of those are steps that could be done now and that should be done as quickly as possible so that there's enough information to really assess both what the current hazard is, but also what the next steps are going to be. So, and I think one other concern, I'm not a lawyer, but having looked briefly at the purchase and sale agreement, it might be helpful to get Town Council to weigh in on how many of these steps can the town pursue while there is still the purchase and sale agreement in effect to sell the building to Mr. Conley. You know, does the town, for instance, have the right to demolish the town's portion of the building within the terms of the purchase and sale? I don't know that, so I think there might be some information that should be gathered about what can be done under the purchase and sale, so. And I would like to offer myself and others from Columbine Cliffs and other people in town, I'm sure, are available to assist in terms of referrals to firms that can do hazardous materials survey. Obviously, Mr. Cohen's very knowledgeable as well. And the other thing that we've done, because we share the concern about the costs and not putting an undue burden on the town, we have started some conversations with the state to find out whether there might be any source of state funding to assist the town, whether it's on the basis of a loan that ultimately would be paid back when the property is developed. You know, obviously, these are tough economic times, but we would like to, we've started those conversations, and we would be happy to continue them to try to find ways to assist the town, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. Is Linda Lee here?
I believe they're meeting downstairs, so if you want to, Mr. Chairman, go down to item six and see if somebody comes up.
Okay. So item six is a discussion of the Milton Hill House development with, I believe we have Ned Clark in here and a representative of the developer as well. If you'd just like to introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Ned Corcoran, I'm an attorney, live at 70 Morton Road, I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the Sullivan family, joined by Nancy Farrow, who is one of the Sullivans, who grew up here in Milton, and they are the owners of the Milton Hill House property, and have been working with them for the last two years in the process of a plan to redevelop a portion of that property. I have a PowerPoint with a stick.
Give it a shot.
We can give it a shot. And I'm also joined by Donnie Garrity, who is a, one of the project architects as well.
A bunch of old people in front of computers, and this is what happens.
That's right.
You want to?
I cannot, I'm in Seattle, but...
There we go. There we are. Okay. Thank you very much.
On the PowerPoint.
So we have a present, brief presentation on the overall plan to redevelop property. I can, I don't know if at home, the laser will pick up, but I do have a laser pointer which will show, but this is the Milton, no, I guess it's not going to show up, I went and bought new batteries for this today. But that, this is the existing Milton Hill House at 36 Elliott Street in Milton. Elliott Street is to the top of the screen that runs from east on the right to the west, between Adams Street on the east and Central Square. The Sullivan family purchased the lot with the Hill House in 1984 and has operated that house as a, with rental units ever since. It was originally built in the early 1960s as part of a special permit variance process that was pursued at the time. I am in a butter, my garage is right at the bottom of the screen, and so although not as directly affected by the new development as others of my neighbors, I live in the neighborhood, and as in a butter, it was very important to me that I work through a process with the neighborhood and the town that I thought would result in a well-done, reasonably scaled, nicely presented development plan that would have mitigate, be nicely mitigating impacts and respond to issues and concerns, both of neighbors and the town. So we started on a process, first meeting that we held with neighbors was in September of 2010, so we're about 20, almost 20 months, 21 months into a process, and have worked on a number of different schemes for building development and site location in a context of neighborhood meetings, meetings with the revitalization committee, and more recently, planning board and Board of Appeals to present, to develop a scheme that could work. We've got a hand, we can show you a handful of those schemes, and then go to where we are today. So this is the first scheme, it was presented, it was dated September 15, 2010. It had 48 units and was going to be located, why don't we, you know what, we should back up just very quickly, and I apologize. Keep going to the site, to the overview. Yep. So on the, the Hill House itself is at the top of the hill. In 2010, the Sullivan family purchased four houses below, two, two families on the right-hand side, the Henry House, which is owned by Joanna Henry, and then another house which stands alone and is not part of the redevelopment, but they purchased those properties with the idea of demolishing the two, two families and building a new multifamily project that would mirror, from a property ownership management perspective, the Hill House, but have a different look and feel that would fit into the neighborhood today. The Hill House itself has 36 units, yet they are apartments. The average tenancies are about nine years, people sell, and mostly from Milton, mostly 60s and 70s in age, no children move in after selling, they want to stay liquid, they want to pay rent instead of owning, perhaps own a second home in either the Cape or in Florida, something like that, but want to be in Milton where their families are, where they grew up, where they've lived. And so they move into these apartments. The Sullivans own and manage their own properties, they own in Brookline, Wellesley, and other communities on the greater Boston area, and they own and operate for a long period of time, and they, I can attest, as in a butter, very good neighbors. They are very responsive, they listen, pay attention to their property, and they pay attention to the neighbors. So the plan is to build a new building, which would be multifamily, multi-tenanted, and sort of add to the portfolio the Sullivans have, and trade off to a reasonable extent the goodwill that they've engendered in the ownership of their property. So if we move to the, move through to the presentation, this is the first. It's 48 units, it's a very large building, it eliminated all three of those buildings, the two, two families and the Henry House, that was too big, we understood that, but trying to get a sense of look and scale, we then looked at two options in October, December, November, December of 2010. This is an L-shaped building that retains the Henry House, as you can see in brown, on the lower right-hand side, with a, with the L sort of going up on the left-hand side, and then an alternative, which was the L, and in this case, would have eliminated the Henry House. Here, it's eating the Henry House, but the, the computer model wasn't able to sort of eliminate the Henry House altogether. So then we looked there, we were asked to look at attaching or marrying to the existing Hill House up at the top of the hill and looking at locating on the other side. And at the end, we came back to the original location, but in a smaller scale, retaining the, the Henry House as an important buffer to the neighborhood, but replacing the mass of the two, two families that exist today and are sort of located just on Elliott Street with another, another building. The, that easterly side of the property, below the site drive where we last looked at sighting a building, is very nicely landscaped, it's got a very severe, steep hill, and so one thought was to replace the mass and not touch the nice green space areas on the property, leave them alone, and really focus on replacing within the area that was already needed replaced. So we've come up with a plan that is essentially three buildings. There's a large multifamily building there that will contain 27 units, mostly twos and some one-bedrooms. They, we restore and preserve and restore the Henry House itself, which is a building of some historic significance, it dates to 1883, it's beautifully architected from the exterior. And then in response to a request of neighbors, particularly on Morton Terrace, we have added a, one, a single-family carriage house, which is a lower level of just two parking spaces with a single two-bedroom unit above. So we have a total of 30 units. So if you want to take...
Is that, is that new construction?
That would be new construction. So building would, new construction would be the new multifamily and the carriage house.
The carriage house.
And the carriage house is designed architecturally and from a color perspective to blend and marry to the, to the Henry House itself, to create its own sense of place adjacent to the existing neighborhood.
And will the Henry House be a historic rehab, or?
The exterior will be a historic rehab, the interior will be two, be two families.
Yeah.
Can I ask, what's, what's the purpose of the, the new carriage house?
The new carriage house is really to serve as, as a part of the physical buffer between the neighborhood at the end of Morton Terrace and West Side Road and the new building. So it masks, screens the new building from the neighborhood. It will, it'll have a single unit upstairs, it gives it height, and so it provides a sense of place between the neighborhood and, so you can see on the right-hand side of the picture there, the end of Morton Terrace as it comes in, and what those two buildings do from a sense of place, they're smaller buildings, they're, they're neighborhood scale.
Got it.
They sit between the, the neighborhood scale of the buildings on Morton Terrace and the larger new building. The new building itself, we're proposing to have sort of muted coloring, browns, greens, stone on the lower level, wood on the second two levels, and then a gabled roof that will be inhabited, and that, that would reduce the scale of the building where the bright yellows of the existing Henry House and the, the new carriage house will draw your eye to those buildings, and that will be muted in the background. So very quickly now, we can, we'll kind of fly around the building from different angles. This is looking across Elliott Street from the Dorchester side, then around again to the upper level. The main entrance will be on the upper level, all of the parking on the site will be on the upper level. Interestingly, with respect to parking, the existing Henry House, which used to have a restaurant and has a significant surplus now of parking spaces available because that restaurant was closed in the early 2000s, and the liquor license moved to the Fuller That all of the parking, the parking field that was available for the restaurant just below the Henry House will now be available for shared parking between the existing Mill House and the new, and the new development.
How many parking spaces?
There will be 99 spaces to be shared by both developments. There are 66, there'll be 66 total units, so one and a half space per unit. There are 99 bedrooms, we're actually looking at shrinking one bedroom, one two-bedroom to a one-bedroom to add, to, to address some, some questions with respect to the lower level of the new building, but there would be one, essentially one bedroom per, one vehicle, one parking space per bedroom. The Hen, the existing Hill House has 36 tenants, and there are 36 cars. cars. The average vehicle ownership is one per couple, one per resident. And we think we'll have a similar tenancies. So we think there's a, there's a significant amount of parking available. It is a transit-oriented development. It is walking distance, short walking distance to two MBTA stops, one at Milton, one at Central Avenue, new restaurant going in across the street at Fallon Ambulance Building, walk to the Wharf Street, eighty-eight Wharf Restaurant, walk across the river to Shaw Supermarket. It is a, very much of a walking, walkable location. And so, I think that the Sullivans have found that their tenants generally need one car. They don't need a second car. They take advantage of the transit. And when our traffic engineer was out evaluating, he actually observed a number of people in the morning walking down the hill, walking to trolley to head into Boston to work. So, the building layout is on the first floor, the Elliot Street side will have four units. And then the mechanicals, storage, and others, things will be built into the, into the, the hill itself. Takes advantage of the change in grade to bury those rooms. There'll be bicycle storage on a lower level. There's plenty of storage. So that will be taken care of in that way. And then on the, the second floor, the main entrance will be on the, that ground level on the second floor. There are seven units on the second level and eight each on the third and fourth. And the top level is built within the roof line. It is a fully occupied roof level. So, we break it up in sort of three, to three-
So that's how you're able to get three, three levels and maintain the same height as the, the other houses?
So we are, we were encouraged to honor the height, the ridge, the height of the ridge of the roof of the Henry House. And this building is four feet taller than that. We've pushed it down the hill as much as we can to get it as close as we can to the height of the Henry House. It is, it is taller, but not significantly. And then the height of the, of the new two-family, of the new carriage house will be roughly the same height.
What would be the setback off of Elliot Street?
Setback off of Elliot Street at its closest point, and maybe if you go back one, is twelve feet. And that is on the front-left corner. Elliot Street sort of swings around. The setbacks, as you move towards, to the west, towards central, are further back. The closest point is that front-left corner, or the portion of the front corner of the building that is stepped back. There's a little bit of the building that is stepped back, and that is just under twelve, is just twelve feet. So, we are, there are a number of variances that are required. Setback being one, height being one, density of, of units, another. And then various setbacks, side yard, et cetera, for the parking areas and whatnot. So there are not, a total of nine variances that are required in order to facilitate this development. And we are, we have begun the public hearing process with the Board of Appeals. We started in, in late April. We are continuing to June twenty. At the same time, we've started the public hearing process with the planning board. We need site plan approval. And we know that the Board of Appeals is, wants to hear from the planning board that the site can be developed, can handle the development that's proposed, both from a parking, from a site utility, from a drainage perspective, physically, that it can handle the development. And we think we're very confident that it can. So, one of the things that, well, let's fly around and we get closer.
Just one question then.
Sure.
So, will you do the, the Board of Appeals and the planning board simultaneously?
Yeah. We can't get site plan approval technically-
Yeah.
-until the variances are approved. You have to have the right to develop. But the planning board started the public hearing for the sake of doing the technical review of the development so that they can then comment back to the Board of Appeals. We're back before the planning board, June fourteenth, and we go to the Board of Appeals right now, June twenty. And if successful, we'll go back to the planning board, June twenty-eighth, and hopefully on the twenty-eighth, we'll get site plan approval. So, we needed to, we needed to be in both processes, but we need to be careful as to which one-
Right.
-which one gets resolved first. So, this is a view looking down the top of Morton Terrace with the, the two, with the Henry House and the new carriage house front and center. This drops down to street level. You can see the yellow of the new building, the, the Henry House and the new carriage house will draw your eye to the front, and then the, the mass of the, the bigger building in the rear. If you can go just up, back one, Donnie. One of the things that we've done in careful consideration with the, the neighborhood and with the fire chief is that access to the site. Currently, the Henry House is served by access directly off of the end of Morton Terrace. There are two small driveways that go up from Elliot Street that serve the two-two families, but you access the Henry House through Morton Terrace. The neighbors are very concerned about that. They've asked us to close off the end of Morton Terrace. You can see there's a fence that's sort of rounded. And in discussions with Chief Grant, he's agreed that it is fine to close off the end of Morton Terrace, as long as he can park a ladder truck at the end of Morton Terrace and run a ladder over that fence, or worst case, he can blow through the fence. He's fine. One of the things that we will be doing, which will improve fire safety and water quality, is that right now, water service to Morton Terrace is dead-ended at the property line. The Henry House gets its water service from Elliot Street. We will put the wet mechanical room on the portion of the building, the new building closest. We have to bring water and sewer service to the new carriage house. We'll create a loop system for the town that will improve pressure and water quality. There's a fire hydrant at the end of Morton Terrace that will be, you know, an improvement from a public safety perspective. And so, the neighbors are pleased with that. It's rounded with a little cul-de-sac that gives room to push snow in the winter, and it gives room for the two, the neighbors at the far end, the Chauveses and Mrs. Tracy, to actually be able to back out of their driveway, turn into, back into that cul-de-sac and then pull down. Their, their driveways are on the property line, so-
Is, is there a hydrant right there?
There is a hydrant that is towards the end of Morton Terrace. Next. And so, again, that's the, looking down Morton Terrace, and then from there, we'll show it more close up with, with, without, and then with foliage. Again, you can see the carriage house modeled substantially, a little different, but modeled substantially on the appearance of the, of the Henry House. And that the, the two of them form an attractive physical buffer between Morton Terrace and the larger building to the rear. Now, a couple of views as we come up. Elliot Street from Central Avenue, the Masterson House, that block, that sort of a block house there, that was the other house that was acquired by the Sullivans from a gentleman named Masterson. He actually sold and moved into the Hill House. And so, we've been asked about demand. There's, there's already a list being started in town of people who want to have access to the rental units, the new units. But that's an example. He sold and moved in, and they have now re-rented that. And that is there. So as you're coming up Elliot Street, you don't see the new building until you really get sort of by that. And we're looking carefully now. This is the, this is the latest view. We've got balconies to break up the front. We've asked, been asked to take a look at some other features, and we will be in the next couple of weeks presenting some different ideas, perhaps some awnings, looking at creating sort of a first-floor entryway that would be downstairs from the, from the upper-level entryway that would give more of a, of a presence to Elliot Street. One of the concerns, we've heard loud and clear from a number of that, we, we haven't really, we've paid very careful attention to the neighbors, as we should. We haven't paid as careful attention in the architectural and in the, in the site development to the visual impact that the buildings and the site would have for people coming on the street. And so we're working very hard now to sort of respond to that. But this, as you see coming up, you see how the building is stepped back. It's not one long wall. It is, it is not in a single plane. It is stepped back a number of feet on this side, and then as you come around to the other side, it's also stepped back. You can see that jog in the front corner of the building. The balconies give it some, give it some appearance. There's been some question about balconies. Balconies are an important amenity for the tenants, and the Sullivans have some very careful rules and regulations about what's allowed to be stored. And there will be bicycle storage downstairs, no hibachis or grills. But we think that, that one of the, the things that, that a balcony can do is it can give some presence, some people presence, if you will, for the building to the street. When nice weather, if someone's sitting out, you actually gauge the street, not just physically, but from a personnel perspective as well. This is a closer look of the backside of the site. Again, you can see how the building is stepped and changed as well. And this is from the end of West Side Road, which is the upper dead end. Looking down, you can see, you see some of the building. There's a real significant copse of woods there. You can see on the next, I think it's the, yeah. So, this is the basic landscape plan. There is a significant mass of woods, mostly deciduous trees on the up, upper level, that six or seven months of the year provide a nice visual barrier between the Milton Hill House itself and the neighborhood, but which, from November on until April, somewhat barren and you look right through at the, at that big, beautiful building that was built in the nineteen sixties. So, one of the things that we've done, and it's, again, careful response to neighbor concerns, is that we're going to remove about twenty feet coming down the side and along the back of a retaining wall that is, exists now, and replace that with evergreens of various heights that will grow quickly, be drought resistance, resistant, and, and create a year-round screen between the, the neighbors on the upper side and the building. The topography here is really interesting. It is the level of the back of the sidewalk at the peak of the crown of Elliot Street. Elliot Street crowns as it comes up and down, and the highest point of Elliot Street is actually at about the midpoint of the new building. That's at sixty-one feet elevation. The other side of the building is at seventy-five feet approximately. It is at about eighty feet at the top of the retaining wall. It gets to eighty-five and ninety feet as you get to the top of the woods. So, there's a very dramatic change in, in the elevation. By lowering the building as, as much as we have, you're looking down on the building and not up on the building from the neighbor side, it reduces the sense, the sense of scope. And alternatively, we understand that by pushing it down and close off the back of the sidewalk of Elliot Street, that it then has a, it has the potential to loom over Elliot Street. One thing I would just point out in that regard is that there are several other buildings approximate, we are very close to the commercial district. There are other very tall buildings that are right on the back of sidewalk, obviously in the business zone. One Elliot, which is the, the health facility, and then several buildings on, on Adams Street itself. And even the two Adams Street, which I permitted several years ago, and hopefully will be built in the near future on the extra space storage property, that's five stories above the back of sidewalk on Adams Street, right opposite the end of Elliot Street, in front of the, the storage building. So there's, there is precedence for height. And on the other side of Elliot Street, we, we, we don't have the possibility of the dual canyon effect, because on the other side, we drop off the retaining wall down to the MBTA tracks, to the bike path and to the river. So there's no possibility that something would ever be built across Elliot Street. We, and we, in addition, we landscape the, the, the neighbor side of the building with a nice patio, place for people to sit on a nice afternoon. And then on the other side, we're proposing a significant amount of landscaping between the retaining wall on the back of sidewalk and the front of the new building. The north is Elliot Street, and we do know that the sun will come around the other way. The front door of Elliot Street will be, is on the north side, so plantings will be taking, take into account that there would be less sun than in others, but it is, with nothing across the street, there's plenty of light. And one of the things that we, that we, we have understood is that currently, the Hill House property itself has very good drainage and catch basin system. It collects storm water and drains down to a discharge to a point right at the driveway and then into the town's system across Elliot Street. There is nothing that captures storm water either on the two families or the Henry House. They just would not have been built with anything. We'll have a new catch basin system installed, which will tie into the town's system, which will dramatically reduce the sheeting of, of water down onto the sidewalk. We still have to pay attention to the direct fall of rain and snow on the sidewalk, and the Sullivans have been very good historically about snowing and taking care of the sidewalk itself. So, that is the, an overview of the presentation. As I said, I've been really pleased to be involved in this project. I, I am in a butter. I'm very concerned about how this worked its way through my neighborhood and how my neighbors have responded to this project. I appreciate all of their comments. It hasn't always been, it, it, it hasn't gone perfectly. No project ever does. It always has its issues, and we've tried to listen very carefully and respond. And I give the Sullivans tremendous credit for listening and responding as we've gone along. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions and happy to-
How many, how many neighborhood meetings have you had in two, in twenty-one months?
We think we've had, while we're on, we were joking the other day that we'll have one parking space per-
One meeting.
One unit per meeting. So we think something like twenty-five to thirty meetings, neighborhood, revitalization committee, Milton Hill Neighborhood Association, Columbine Cliffs Neighborhood Association. We've had generally one per month, sometimes more, sometimes less, but generally one a month for the last twenty-one or twenty-two months.
What's been some of the feedback and how have you addressed the feedback from, from those meetings?
Most of the feedback has been, has been around, too big, too tall, too much work. Can you, can you move it here? Can you move it there? Can we, can you change this appearance? Really focusing on appearance from the neighborhood, effect and impact from the neighborhood side. Closing Elliot, closing off Morton Terrace, for example, paying closer attention to the, to how we would landscape with the evergreens, because we understood that the woods were important, but understanding that the woods don't provide a twelve-month-a-year buffer, that we had to do something more than that. Listening to them about the notion of creating a sense of place with something that went with the Henry House, preserving the Henry House and keeping that place as an important physical buffer. Listening as well to questions and comments about how the building appears on the street. That's, that's gotten much later comment, as we've sort of arrived that we think is substantially yes on everything else. People are now saying, you know, maybe we have not paid enough attention to the street, so we're really focusing on that now. But in general, the comments have been about making sure we placed it on the site in a way that respected the rest of the site, that eliminated buildings and replaced building mass with building mass. There's a general sense that the two fam, the old two families are really old and dilapidated and not ought to be removed, and that replacing them with something in kind, it was a good idea. Obviously respecting the neighbors' concerns for how the height would affect them from a day-to-day process and not loom over the neighborhood, the way that the existing building, the Henry, the Hill House- and not loom over the neighborhood, the way that the existing building, the Henry, the Hill House does is something that was important. So, I think we've, you know, those are generally the, the comments that we've received. You know, there's not unanimity. There's some that are concerned that we're adding more density to an area that is already gaining density. And so, we understand that. But we think that the amount of density we're adding is not significant. We've done a traffic report. The traffic report says that the traffic impacts would be negligible. We can handle the parking on-site with ease. We can deal with trash removal and, and other things without difficulty. So.
If you want in two bedrooms, shouldn't put any strain on the school system.
Correct. And I know that some have asked, I know Mr. Chairman, you've asked and Eddie Duffy at the Planning Board have asked whether we can include affordable units. And they're looking, the Sullivan's are working with Bill Clark to identify a set of units that would be spread across both developments that would achieve, we think, as much as ten percent of the number of total units for affordable.
Ten percent of, of the whole.
Of the whole. So, sixty-six units, somewhere in the neighborhood of six.
That's right.
Spread across. It's new growth. It's residential in nature, but it is new growth. And we think the net tax value is something like sixty thousand dollars. You know, when you take out the, the taxes that are being paid now and you account for, we think, new value. Obviously, that's subject to the town's own assessments. But we think fair, you know, not an, not an insignificant amount of new growth, given a town that grows very, does grow somewhat slowly in terms of opportunity for new growth.
Given, given the location, especially between two train stations or trolley stops, whatever you want to call them, does it come under the smart growth?
Probably wouldn't because of the parking. I think smart growth, you can have less than one parking space per, my recollection, per unit.
It, well.
In order to officially qualify.
Yeah, it's not, but it's, it's substantially there. It does pay attention to the fact that we have two trolley sta, two trolley stops that are each within walking distance. We've got, you know, there's, there's more than enough parking. We did pay attention to the, the, the parking and unit count calculations that Alex Whiteside wrote into the planned unit development overlay zoning for both the Wharf Street and extra space storage properties and also for the Central Avenue properties. And so, one, paying attention to one space per bedroom was important. Although we think in that case, we're providing an excess of parking over than what otherwise would be needed.
You probably won't even use all the parking, given the train stations. But again, given the location, does it qualify for new market tax credits, anything like that? Are you going for tax credits there?
Don't plan to.
Not even historic rehab credit or?
I'm sorry?
Not even a historic rehab credit or?
Well, yes.
Yeah, okay. But not, not any other kind of state credits? Yeah, in terms of the smart, I mean, for people that don't understand what smart growth is, it's, it's basically the, explain to me is that the carrot behind the stick of forty B is that it gives, if you qualify for smart growth, it actually gives the town some money to be able to afford the schools and whatnot that might come as a, as a result of it. But there, I remember it was discussed when the, the planned unit development on the rest of Central Ave was, and the problem was the, the density with parking, you know, would be less than one parking space per unit. And I don't think anybody's willing to go that low. So, I think that was the problem.
Yeah, we're also, there's no proposal to put any commercial in this. So, we're not, we're not adding commercial. That was, that was something that the neighborhood was concerned about.
Have the, one last question. I'm sorry, Tom, if that's okay. I'm in a similar business where we do a lot of developments primarily in the city of Austin. But I usually, before I bring any lawyers on board, I represent myself in front of the neighbors. Is, have the Sullivan's been active with the, with the neighbors? Are you just, are you representing them?
I'm representing them, but they've been at all the meetings.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. I think that's a good thing.
And Nancy's the one you call and neighbors call when they have issues about tree limbs down, about the fence needs to be replaced, about, I mean, they're, they are very responsive.
And I, I see Bill Clark trying to get my attention. So.
Transit-oriented development project. Yes, it is a smart growth project. You've got stores within walking distance. You've got two train stations. You've got food stores, drug stores, coffee shops, banks.
Yup.
Hardware stores. Everything you need to walk to live there. But you do have the train. You've got the mic way.
Right, you'd have, everything you need to qualify.
Yeah, but.
Well, I just want to say in, in terms of the Sullivan's as developers, I feel very fortunate that I've known Nancy's father for decades, James Sullivan, and her mother, Diane Sullivan. They spent years in Milton. I have the highest regard for them. And I'm sure Nancy's a chip off the block. And I've known Nancy since she played basketball up at Milton High School. And I can tell you that the Sullivan family, I think of them in the highest regard. And it's obvious to me too that Mr. Cochran's done his homework and I'm delighted that he's a neighbor.
Okay, and just so that everybody knows that the, we did reach out to the, to the Milton Village Revitalization Committee. And they did send a letter back. And it sounds like in, in generally, they approve of the development.
Chairman, see him if you want to. And there's some members from the revitalization cell.
If you want.
Mark, have it here.
I say who you are so everybody knows, but.
John Zickwitz. I'm the co-chair of Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee. I have a couple of members here with me tonight, Kathy Dumphy and Ruth Hayden. And you're correct, we did send you a letter of our recommendations and our observations. And I'm happy to go through them if you'd like or just answer questions.
Yeah, just go through them just so the, the public knows what some of those concerns are and if they've been addressed or are processes being addressed.
Okay. What Ned said was, is correct. We've had a lot of meetings. The committee was happy to act as a forum between the neighbors and the development team. I am a former resident of Morton Terrace. I just moved in November, but I was there for fourteen years. So, right down the street from the development. So, I'm very familiar with it. We were, you know, happy to act a liaison between the group and provide some space. And I think the neighbors and development team got a lot of good input together. I think there was a lot of good interaction. Development team was very responsive at looking at different options, reducing the size. I think the plan that they have come up with, I think, has been, had, has received a good reception. I think it makes a lot of sense from a development standpoint. Just as background, I am also a registered architect. My firm is in Boston. So, I do have some design knowledge and knowledge of development. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to put a new building where there are old buildings. So, you have a sustainable aspect to it. You're not just disturbing virgin soil. You're, you're kind of taking down old buildings, putting new, a new building in its place. So, and also I think also works to people's memory as they come up Elliot Street. Seeing something in that area. It's going to be bigger, obviously, but you're not taking out where one of the previous options where, where it was just all the landscaped lawn and you weren't putting a new building there and kind of disturbing what's always been kind of an open landscape. You're putting a building in where there are current buildings. So, I think that kind of, that helps to work with what you see every day, what you're used to seeing. So, I think that's a good idea. So, as Ned says, been a lot of time spent with the, with the neighborhood. A lot of focus on the, I would say is the inside of development, what faces Morton Terrace, landscaping, how the building's masked. The, the little carriage house, how that works with the Joanna Henry House, how, how the view down Morton Terrace has a series of steps to it. So, you don't see the building all at once. You have kind of smaller building than Joanna's Henry's building than the new development kind of poking up behind it. So, it's a series of screens that you see. So, all that's been working well. We've had some conversations about how the building fits on Elliot Street. We didn't spend a lot of time there, but we had some, some conversations there. And then as we were wrapping up meetings, Ned had said, I'd offer that, you know, we'd continue down the design path as he'd go through the boards and further that design. That's what our recommendations primarily focused on were the Elliot Street side or more the town side of, of the development. If I can kind of run through them quickly if you'd like. Item one is the exterior is still, we feel it needs some further design review. It's a little flat. I, I think what's, it starts off really well. I think when you're looking to put a building on a site, you look to the massing of the buildings around it and try to start to replicate that to fit into what's kind of the fabric of what's there. And I think they started doing that. If you look, you see the Joanna Henry building there on the right. And then you start to see the new building has a similar rectangular shape. So, they start to break it up, but then you hit a really long, flat wall there. And then another little break at the stair. We're looking at that flat wall section primarily, how to break that up. Can we do something in the middle to push it back in so that you can have two other kind of rectangular forms? So, that as you see it on the street, the massing kind of breaks down and you have a similar look to what's there now as individual homes, even though it's one big building. From the street, it reads more as an individual homes with a connection between them. So, that's what we're, that's what we primarily talked about in item one. The balcony space, we feel would be better on the Elliot Street side as bay windows. The balconies would be fine on the internal, the internal side of the development. But on the Elliot Street side, we feel it would be a better view if they were, sorry, bay windows similar to what's on Wharf, eighty-eight Wharf. We have the bay windows where it would start to help break up the massing, but it would also give some nice interior space to the units. It would give a variety. If you had some, some units that had balconies on the inside, some, some units that had bay windows on the outside might give a little variety to what you can rent out to people. We just feel it's going to be tough to keep those balconies looking good. Even though it might be something written up in the lease, who polices it? You know, somebody walking by on the street, you have to make a phone call or there's a bike on that, on that balcony. How's it get resolved? Does a letter get sent? The tenant ignores the letter. You send another letter. You have three months down and stuff's piling up. So, I think it'd be better to resist, to remove the temptation on that side by doing something else. More of the Elliot Street facade as a front door. I know Ned spoke about all the attractions and as a transit-oriented development, smart growth development. That focuses a lot on pedestrian use and not on the car. So, if you want to be more smart growth, there needs to be a better connection to Elliot Street. If you're going to have people walking to restaurants, walking to the bank, you don't want them to come out on the inside, have to walk down the driveway and get there. There should be a nice connection to Elliot Street. I think right now it's either through the egress stair or through the receiving area.
I can just comment on that. We do, we have, there are two first lower level egress. There is a stair that connects on the left side of the building. And then there's an egress on the right that is for trash removal. Will come out the front and be taken away a couple of times a week. But we're looking at, in response to this in particular, creating sort of a second lower level entrance that would more fully engage the street as a response to.
So, if, you know, if there was a way you could carve something out in the middle of that flat wall, maybe that could be an, an entrance point from Elliot Street where they could come up into the building or residents could come out and engage the street. Item D, as the project goes, we'd like to see an exterior materials board, color samples for review by the, by the committees and planning board and the Board of Appeals and whoever else wants to see those kind of things. Make sure that the architectural language between the Henry House and the Carriage House continues to be developed. I think they're doing a great job on that. We just want to make sure that that gets followed through on. Item two, we were talking about a shadow study being required to make sure, to see how this building will now affect shadows on Elliot Street for snow removal in the wintertime, ice, things like that. And then just to ensure that the owner will continue to maintain, I mean, they've done a, I didn't, when, well, this past winter was actually very mild, but the previous winter, now I'm still a resident and we got buried in the snow. They did do a great job of keeping the sidewalks clean because that was where part of my dog walking path every night. So, they do do a great job. Just want to make sure that they maintain it if this becomes more in shadows because of this new, new construction. Submitting a comprehensive traffic study that takes into account all the previous projects that have been, that are in the, either constructed like thirty-sixth Central Avenue or those that are still being developed like the Henry's Development, the restaurant in ninety-three, ninety-five Elliot, Two Adam Street. Make sure it gets looked at altogether, not in isolation, because everything's going to start adding up to that.
Has that been done yet, Ned, or?
Yeah, it has. Okay. Item four is just where that trash, trash and delivery zone is. Make sure that that's just a little more time spent on that side. When trucks are backing in, there's a safe way they get, for them to get in and get out because, you know, there's a little rise in the road there and you're also kind of coming around a little turn. So, just spend a little time. I'm sure the eight, the different boards in town and engineering, everybody else will, will look at it. But we just wanted to point that out. Make sure that there's no exterior dumpsters or compacters. I know right now everything's planned to be behind closed doors. You know, sometimes as things, they load up and we need another one that gets put outside. So, just maintain that it gets kept inside the building. Number five is just preserving the architectural character of the exterior of the Henry House. I think in all the rendering so far, they're doing a good job on that. We just want to make sure that stays that way. And then during construction, make sure they protect and maintain that beautiful blue spruce in the front yard. You see kind of that right there, that element. You know, it's a little close to construction and, you know, if you're going out, if you dig out another ten feet past that building edge to put your foundations in, you might start getting into the roots of that spruce. So, we want to make sure that it's maintained and we don't run into issues like at the Henry's. We don't need another tree. More excitement over a tree. Number six, proposed landscape plan. They're starting to show the new, new sidewalk trees, uh, side, trees on the property and along the sidewalk. We'd like to see if they could continue that down along the length of their whole property from one corner of the property to the other end. Preferably to High Street if they could do that, but at least from one corner of the property to the other and start to develop a, a tree line along that street. Again, we think that'd be really important for the way that looks for pedestrians coming along Elliot Street. Item seven, it's kind of a continuation of that. Many years ago, one of the concepts that this committee recommended was developing a connection between the two business districts, Central Avenue and Milton Village. And we had talked about a Baker Chocolate Walk. And at one point, just outside where Personalized Fitness is now, there was probably about a ten-foot section of sidewalk where we got some small grant to redo some bricks. And we started to develop a brick pattern to look like a Baker Chocolate bar. The thought was that we could develop a connection between the two business areas where pedestrians walk back and forth, see the chocolate mills, you know, kind of connect to the history. But since that has, you know, not, nothing's happened with that, but since the development of Central Avenue with the new sidewalk paving, the new lighting, we'd like to at least see that continued down the street. So, because a lot of this sidewalk will be damaged during construction, when it gets replaced, we'd like it to mimic what's been done on Central Avenue with the, with the paving patterns, with the lighting. So, again, to start to create that connection between the two business areas. Because last fall, there was, they had, I forget the formal name of it, where they had the, the business night between Central Avenue and Milton Village. And all the businesses stayed open late one night and there was a lot of people walking up and down the street. It was really nice. So, it'd be nice to kind of reinforce the connection and, and develop a nice pedestrian way along that sidewalk. So, we'd like to see those elements get included in the development. So, that's basically seven and eight, the sidewalks, the lighting. Nine would be to put some benches. I know that not all the sidewalk depths along Elliot Street would allow for that, but there are some areas along the wall where it widens out a little bit or it might be a nice spot to put a couple of benches for, again, for people walking or they could sit and look out over the chocolate mills and be a nice little place there. Ten would be, we would encourage any measures where you could improve the aesthetics of the existing Milton Hill House. We think this is going to be a really nice building here at the base. If there's something that could be done to kind of the box on the top of the hill, I'm not sure what could be done. Maybe some materials could be upgraded, maybe some paint, maybe some landscaping, just something maybe to take a little of the edge off that building if there was a possibility of that. And then the eleventh is just make sure that there's a design review process that's incorporated as part of the planning board review, which they typically do do that, but we just wanted to emphasize that that happens because we think it's a very important project and there's still some elements that could make it even a stronger project and a better connection for the town from the Elliot. for the town from the Elliott Street side and, and make it work for the neighbors as well.
John, has the planning board seen all these recommendations?
They received a copy. I'm not sure if they've reviewed them yet, but they, they, we sent copies to yourselves, to the planning board and to the Board of Appeals and to Mr. Clark.
Okay.
And my saying is they have been distributed. I'm not sure if everyone's actually read them, but they have been distributed.
He nods to BS over there.
Oh, they all got them.
So, any questions that you have of our committee, or?
I do like the recommendation, or your, your concern about the, the little, what do you call them, the decks at the front?
The balconies.
The balconies?
Yes.
But, you know, given, again, given the location, you have the river right in front of you. It would be nice to sit out there in the evening and look over the...
Well, you could sit in a, in a bay, too, and still sit, see.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's going to be tough to police what gets on there, and it could look cluttered very quickly.
It is, and I don't know if you like the Romeo and Juliet balconies?
Mm-hmm. The little small ones, yeah.
Small ones?
Yeah, like a foot or so, yeah.
It's impossible to put out a grill or whatever.
Yeah.
Your recommendation?
That could be something that could, yeah. Because I just, I just see problems if, you know, how do you actually, you know, you know it's written into your lease? How do you police it? How do you enforce it?
You can't.
Yeah, you really can't. Yeah. Is it economically feasible, like a box bay kind of thing, where you could actually put a door?
We're, you know, the Sullivans and the architects are looking at some alternatives. It is an important amenity, so it's something that they think is important to maintain on the building, and some people like it and some people don't. So we're trying to find a way to make the presentation of them work as well as possible while preserving, honoring at least what the Sullivans think is important.
Right. Anybody else got any comments, or?
Well, I just want to thank you, John. It's the first time that I've met you. I have been reading your communications about various items in Milton Village, Central Ave, and I feel good that the Central Ave area, Milton Village area is progressing and it's starting to show revitalization, and I think that's a tribute to you and your committee members.
Thank you.
Good point, because it is a very important business district that has kind of gotten forgotten, I think, over the years, and it's nice to see it starting to come back again.
Well, we have a really dedicated committee. We have a lot of really good professionals on there, landscape architects, planners, real estate, local business people. Ned was a former member of our committee, and so we have some real professionals, really a lot of experience in development, and I agree, I think that area's coming around tremendously. I think when a new restaurant comes in, the old Fallon Building, and, you know, Henry's gets resolved, and 2 Adams comes in, I think it's just going to be a really wonderful area, really wonderful area it'll be.
I can speak as, you know, I was a former member, but as a, as a, someone who has represented a number of developments in this area, that to have a committee like the Revitalization Committee available to come in and to vet project ideas, to, to help mold in a, in a public process that is not necessarily a decision-making process is very, very helpful. We spend a lot of time with them and listen very carefully to them. We don't, you know, you never agree completely, but we know that when we've come through the process, that we've responded as much as possible, and the boards respect the time that they've put in when, when they, when the boards go ahead and make their, make their recommendations, they really, and they, and they, they work at it. You know, a lot of the meetings that we had were with the, with the committee. We spent hours with them onsite, downstairs, here, and without them, we wouldn't be near, nearly as close as we are.
Yeah, we, we feel it's a good process, because it gets, gave the neighbors a chance to kind of get out their issues, and Ned's team to come back with some resolutions, and the architects worked really hard at resolving things. So I think it got a lot of the stuff out of the way, so that now as they start to move forward, I think it's a cleaner, more accepted development package that's going forward. And if they just started publicly right off the bat, I think if things were, got slowed down in a hurry. So now I think it's more details that we're dealing with instead of big concepts.
Great. Okay. And as, as a board of selectmen, we, you know, typically don't get all that involved in, in a development project, but we certainly can, you know, give our support if we'd like to, you know, either individually or, or as a board to, to this project. I don't know how you all feel about it, but, you know, if you want to either make a motion to support it or individually support it, I'll entertain either one of those.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, we approve the development and move it to the next stage.
Second motion.
And I guess it's a friendly amendment. We really don't have the authority to approve anything, but, but support the development.
We'll support, yeah, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
And it's been seconded? Okay, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing that all's in favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the, the time. We appreciate the invitation.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Chairman, I think the 350th Committee is still probably meeting, so putting last-minute touches, but I don't know if you just want to highlight next weekend's events?
Sure.
If you have a copy.
Okay, I was just, put in front of me, and obviously, I think most people know that we, we do have a big get-together next weekend, starting on Friday, June 8th, with a, what I understand is going to be a tremendous fireworks display at Milton High School. And that is starting, what, 6:30? Well, actually, the fireworks at 9, but the event starts at 6:30 with food for sale, live entertainment. Then on the 9th, we have a parade and a family fun day and concert. And parade is starting when, 2 PM?
2 PM.
Yep. And then we have an alumni reunion weekend, as far as I know, only from 8:30 to 11:00? All years alumni, okay, going to be there from 8:30 to 11:00, the Culbin Fieldhouse. And then there's also the family fun day starting at 3:30 PM at Milton High School, which, high school be set up with a stage for family games, activities, food for sale, face painting, hospitality tents, Big Joe the storyteller and singer, Susan Reed will entertain the kids. And we have a band and drum corps concert at Milton High School, featuring the Woodlands String Band, the Mummer's, Drum and Bubblin Band, performances by Stuart Highlands, Highlanders, and more. And that's sponsored by Blue Hill Bank. And then on Sunday, we have a town-wide picnic at the gazebo right outside Town Hall and a community concert. I guess at that concert, we're going to have the Bay State Stompers, Dixieland, Jedley's Magic Show, hayrides, and food for sale. And then free anniversary cake will be served, and there'll be a community concert at First Parish Church from 3 to 4. So that's, that's a mouthful. A lot going on that weekend, yeah. Yeah, you know, all I can say is that, and we all realize that 350th Committee's done a tremendous job, you know, from the, the concert at the Marriott that Pauline Wells and Tynan Ronan did, which was a tremendous event that I attended. I think we kicked it off earlier with a dinner at the Fruit Center, which was kind of a beautiful event. You know, we've done various things.
A number of events at the schools, the schools have been participating.
Yeah. So, yeah, it was great. I don't have an awful lot more to say about this.
Year-long celebration.
Lynda Lee Sheridan sent us an email. I haven't responded, but you wanted the selectman to get back to it?
I just got back from vacation, so I should see it.
I believe that's to check in with us, because Pat Desmond asked me, too, if the selectmen were going to be in the parade, and I said yes, and I thought so.
Yep. As far as I know, I, I was talking to some of the school committee people, they're going to be in the parade, I know that. I certainly intend to be there, marching.
I've responded yes.
Okay.
And I'll respond yes. We can practice our marching. Do we have a dress rehearsal, marcher?
Now, I understand that the cemetery trustees have a float, actually.
Yes.
Don't know exactly what they're planning.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, none of us would look good in a float, I don't think. It's...
Do us.
That's badger ways.
That would be the last item for open session, Chairman.
Okay. And do we want to, well, I don't know, do we want to go into executive session now?
Yes.
Okay, they're not going to make it up?
No, no, probably not. They were going to be updated by now.
Okay. All right, then it's come that time when we're going into executive session. So I propose a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with regard to contract negotiations, union and non-union collective bargaining and pending litigation, believing that having those discussions in open session would compromise the bargaining position of the body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.